There was no. Right. My knowledge was that. Welcome.
Okay, meeting come to order, please. We will have, start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
The United States of America, two republics, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Calling of the roll, please.
Mr. Mann.
Here.
Ms. Wager.
Yeah.
Mr. Loudermilk.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Here.
Ms. Benet.
Here.
All right. Review of the early preceding meeting. Any corrections to that? June 9th meeting. Hearing, I think I would accept a motion to accept that.
So moved.
All second.
Moved. Mr. Schweitzer. Second in vain. Ms. Spence Benet. Do you want roll call on these, Bob?
It's not necessary if you, but you need to announce the result.
Okay.
Approved or...
All right. I think then we can have that all favor by aye.
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 Pose same side. The minutes passed, 7:00. Okay, at this time, time for public comment, I think maybe we have one email that you might read into the record. And advise at this time that the public is welcome to make comments by email after the meeting as well. Those things we consider. Council administrator, do you have?
I have one email and it's from Donna Williams. And I will also advise that there was a picture included with this email and it does not print out, so, but you guys all received the picture in your email. Dear council members, I recently attended a Norman Rockwell exhibit and noted this picture of citizens asking government what they are doing. It prompts me to ask, as I did in June, what is the plan for the surplus money as projected by Councilwoman Spence Benet and confirmed by Councilman Thompson? Thank you. Donna Williams, 51 East Long Ridge Road, Tarro, Indiana.
Any comment from? Okay. Communications from elected officials or other officials?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are we going to answer that, that question?
Do you want an answer to that question?
Well, I'm, I'm...
I mean, are you demanding an answer to that question?
No, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, it seems like there are many different things that we could say in response to a question like that. There are process answers, there are delay answers, but the question remains, are we going to address those funds? Do we have a plan to do that, I think is the question? Do, do, and so, can we answer that? Or is, is there something that we're just not ready to do now, which, which is also an answer? But, but just not answering seems
Well, I would...
Less than we should do.
I would consider this. At least two things. One, we have a list, it says 10 threats to local government revenues from Corona recession. And I think at the, when we get the normal business conducted, we'll review that and, and that may shed some light on some of the questions about revenue, what it is actually. And the other thing, I think we may have a, a presentation this evening that could be funded with some of those revenues. So I think those two things.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other? We'd ask, not at this time, but we've asked the at least three departments to come in to give us some information on annual budget. So, moving on, reports from standing committees. None. Reports from select committees? None. Okay, so, resolutions. Councilman Loudermilk, we have the resolution modifying local income tax rates for Vigo County. Could you help us with that?
Yes, Mr. President. We have before us in our packet, begins on page 3, Resolution 2020-06, Resolution Modifying Local Income Tax Rates. And if everyone can recall, several months ago, I believe it was in May, we had suspended the rules because we did not have an April meeting. Suspended our rules to discuss this and set the rates for the fire protection districts and our, our fire departments within the county. At that time, we set the allocation at 65-30% ratio. And then, if you look at the resolution now, it gives the listed service providers, along with the amounts that will be allocated to them. Each of the listed service providers had provided information to the council requesting funds. And they did so before the timeline, or I'm sorry, before the deadline, which is required by statute. We have made a proper announcement with DLGF for this resolution. And it has been reviewed and is acceptable. So what we have to do as a council is once again, review this resolution. And if we so choose, approve it, because it must be approved by September 1st, according to statute, in order for the funds to be given to these service providers. And I know it's been several months ago, so if there's any questions or any concerns, be happy to address whatever those may be.
Ms. Bramble, we vote on this tonight? Okay. Well, the recommendations by the agencies that are receiving the funds were all favorable, weren't they?
Yes.
Okay.
My knowledge, there was no, it is the same, there's the same methodology that we used last year. And all the protection districts and fire departments were in favor of what we did last year. And they were complimentary of how we handled things last year. So I have not heard anything contrary.
I haven't heard anything contrary. Has there been any comments to the council?
They all submitted their request for statute and they did not include anything that suggested they were unhappy with it.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept those.
If I may ask a question?
Sure, certainly.
I want to make sure we're getting the ratio correct. It's 65-35.
I believe that's what we agreed to in, in May, if I recall. Just since it's been several months ago, is that direct language?
Kalissa, I might be misremembering this, but I think you had stated something in an email where this was sent out for our review about the title being Resolution Modifying Local Income Tax Rates. Is this, is this title appropriate for what this?
That is the template that's provided by DLGF.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And it was also approved by DLGF, it was sent.
With that language, yeah, okay, thank you.
At this time then, with those clarifications, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hey? Motion by Councilwoman Wager, seconded by Councilman Thompson. Any more discussion on it? All right, let me have a roll call vote, Mr. Auditor.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Ms. Benet.
Aye.
Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Ms. Wager.
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Morris.
Aye. All right, that was a good one. Help those fire departments. So, moving on. Mr. Loudermilk, Resolution for Modifying Local Income Tax Rates. Did not go through committee. No. Okay. Salary ordinance, I'm sorry. Salary ordinance. Just to pay for court reporter?
Yes. Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yes. It's ROC 24. So we have salary ordinance, it was a request by Title 4D Courts. And yes, that'd be great, Judge. I think you can have a seat there.
Thank you.
Green lights on, is that good? That's good. My name's Philip Adler, I'm the commissioner for the Title 4D Court. And Mr. Bramble called me this afternoon and asked me if I'd come here this evening to talk about the salary of my court reporter Julie Avenue. Let me give you a little quick background. I used to be the Superior Court Judge, Division 2. And Julie was my court reporter for 10 years. And when I retired from the bench, Judge Ready brilliantly took over for me and one of her best decisions so far has been to keep Julie as his court reporter for five years. She's got two degrees, a business degree as well as a paralegal degree. Very skilled court reporter, I mean, when Google has a question about court reporting, they call Julie. So, after five years with Judge Ready, she wanted a change. She was tired of listening for 15 years of divorce cases, which is what that court primarily does. That's why I have all this gray hair, I was there for 18 years. And when I retired and I got bored and when the 4D job became available, because fortunately Judge Sarah Mulligan, who was the commissioner in 4D Court, became Circuit Court Judge, that 4D job became available rightly or wrongly, I was appointed. So Julie transferred from Division 2 as a court reporter to 4D Court as a court reporter, but more than a court reporter, because she's got some Jim Bramble in her. She's also an accountant, because we have all kinds of state and federal forms that we have to send in, because we deal with state and federal money that Julie deals with. And her business degree, of course, is very helpful and Judge Mellican could confirm that. She knows that. My court reporter when I first started was Debbie Hay. She retired in March, after 15 years. And so Julie wanted to come over, I said, fine, I knew her work ethic, I knew how smart she was. But what, but what has happened, for reasons I cannot explain, her salary went down. Lateral movement, court reporter, court reporter, plus all this accounting work that she has to do. She also has to do all the ordering, she pays all the claims. Now, it's not a lot of money, it's 100, about $125 a year, but to her, it seems like a demotion and it's hurtful to her. And I just, I don't know what evil this policy is to try to suppress. I mean, it would be a deterrent, in my opinion, for anyone wanting to make a lateral movement. Oh, you can make a lateral movement and that person needs you very badly. Well, I got news for it, you're going to lose money doing it. Who would do that? Anyway, that's the, you know, that's my pitch and I've, if anyone can explain to me, and I don't want to put words in, in, in Jim Bramble's mouth, but I think he has trouble justifying it too. He, he told me, he said, I don't understand it either. Am I right or wrong, Jim?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't understand. It, I mean, when we're dealing with over $60 million for a jail, which we desperately need, $125 a year doesn't seem a whole lot. When she's doing the same job as she did before and even more, more responsibility. That's my pitch. Any questions? I'm sorry for the casual dress, but the place where I order my, where I rent my suit is closed on Tuesdays. So I, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Okay, so we did not get, so this was tabled at the committee?
Yes.
So to act on it tonight, we would have to suspend the rules? No?
Ms. Morris?
It's not necessary to suspend the rules. We've had a first reading on it.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President, why was it taped? I mean, there, there had to have been a reason. I know from our committee work, we have moved favorably, moved with no recommendation and moved unfavorably. My understanding of the rules, if it's unfavorably, the president has the option of not bringing it before the council. Being tabled, I don't see as one of our, our options in the, my interpretation of the rules. So what was, what was that question? That it was tabled, and I'm assuming that means there was no vote taken at, at the meeting. So, from what we're hearing from the judge, on the salary ordinance, it, to me, it looks like we are changing the rate for that position. We are not changing it for the person. That will be the rate for the position whomever is in. Is that, is that a correct interpretation of this?
Well, I mean, I think she, just acting that she gets the same pay as she got when she was a Division 2 court reporter. And what Debbie Hay, whose place she took, the same salary. She'd been here 15 years, for goodness sake.
I'm, I'm not debating with you, Mr. Adler.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, what, what was the table part to help us understand how we got here tonight? Because it's unusual, in my experience, to have something that was tabled come before.
Are you, are you finished? Okay, I just want to make sure, because you asked me a question, then you kept on your dissertation. So, the reason why we tabled it was, we spoke as a committee and our concern was past practices within, I don't, I don't dispute or disagree with you that this is improper, the way this is set up. I agree 110%. Should she have received that same pay when she started? I feel like she should have. The concern we had as a committee was, there have been others in the past that have moved positions and not received the compensation they had previously. So our concern was setting precedent, although, as you said, it's $125 a year. The grand scheme of life, it's not a whole lot for the county, but it is a slap in the face to her. And I can appreciate that.
But two wrongs don't make a right. The fact that it wasn't correct, the fact that no one came forward and said, hey, what's going on years ago on this, doesn't mean that you should continue on with a policy that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, in my opinion.
And if you let me finish, Judge, I'll tell you where I'm going with this, okay? So, we, as a committee, said that we don't disagree, or we don't disagree with what you're telling us, she should be made whole. We agree with that 110%. Our concern is, that if we move forward and make her whole, without getting research done on how many people this has impacted in the past, we set precedent by just giving her what is due to her, what we believe might be due to her, without knowing how many people that impacts from the past. And we set that precedent, open ourselves up. So we asked the auditor for additional information on those types of individuals it's impacted in the past. We had yet to receive that information. So I don't know if there's two people it's impacted, I don't know if it's 20 people. But I would, I would hate to be in a position where I make her whole and there's 10 other people that have been made whole, because that's not right either. And that's all, I, I feel like we should understand it fully before we move on any of it.
I just have one question. These 10 other hypothetical people, are you assuming that they're making lateral moves exactly like Julie, or?
I don't know, that's why I asked to get the information, because we don't know, we don't know, when it comes to that. We don't have that information before us. I think this is, this has been going on since, what? 14, 15? 16? So, you're talking a number of years here, that there's people that could have been impacted. Do I agree with how this works? Absolutely not. And whether it's $125 or, or $10,000 over the course of a year, it's not right either way. But, I think we need to be very measured in how we move forward and make sure that everybody that has been impacted is made whole together. And instead of just cherry picking and saying, well, we're going to take care of this case, but the one that occurred three years ago, we're not going to look at, we'll just move forward.
So we're waiting on information from the auditor?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would like to know if there's more people that are impacted from this.
Well, I can understand what you're saying, I can't imagine it'd be $10,000.
No, I just hypothetically.
A lateral move wouldn't be significant, I wouldn't think, but it, it could be.
But I'm just saying hypothetically.
I understand what you're saying.
Like you said, it's not, I can understand how she feels, you know, spending that much time with the county and then making less money than what she made before she took that position with you.
Yes.
And I can appreciate that, and, and is it right? No. But, I think it's important to make sure the way we approach this, we do it the right way and don't leave anybody else out.
Is that information, Mr. Bramble, going to be difficult to obtain? You don't think so? Would not be a lot of people or a lot of money?
A lot of money or a lot of...
And as I said, I don't disagree with you. I think she should be made whole. I just want to make sure we don't ring a bell we can't unring.
So if we find out there's four people that should, each should get, should have gotten an extra $200, does that mean you want to prove it, or you will approve it, or you might approve it?
For me, as one person, I, I think everybody should be made whole. I don't think anybody should go backwards in their pay, especially if it's a lateral movement.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, I don't want to take up any more of your time, I'll just wait to hear, I guess, right? Somebody will tell me something.
Again, I'm just one person on a seven-member body, I don't know how, what else feels about this, but that's, that's where I'm at with it. I just, like I said, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to take from people, and especially if it's a lateral move, you're not asking her to do less than what she did previously. And she should be at least made whole where she was previous, in my opinion. As I said, I think it's important to make sure that we're not leaving anybody else out that has been impacted, making sure they're made whole as well.
Okay. But it looks like at this point, Judge, we'll get the information and we'll be in, and at the very minimum, we'll be in touch with you and what we're looking at.
I, I appreciate your, the, the time you've given me this evening.
May we also say, before we're done here, though, that Commissioner Kearns had told us during the course of the meeting, this doesn't change in any way what Councilman Loudermilk just said, but for the future, Commissioner Kearns had indicated that they were looking at the employee handbook. And I think the message that I got from that was that we were hopeful that we could institute policies that, or at least consider instituting policies that would prevent this in the future.
Yeah, that's wise. Anything else I can help you with? Probably not.
Commissioner mentioned this in a committee meeting? Okay, all right, okay. Yes?
I would suggest you go ahead and correct this one and then we'll move on the rest as the, we require, get the information. We know this one's wrong, so might as well fix the fault before you.
I'm just one member too, but if we're a month away, or a couple of months away from, and if, if this pay would be, I presume it would be retroactive, then, oh, okay, then I would prefer that we get the information so we can see clearly the whole decision that we're making for everybody. I, I just think that's more whole for, for the, the process that we're trying to correct here.
Well, I think that's exactly what we're saying. Councilman Loudermilk feels like that it might be, there's some things there that, that we need to consider, consider. The auditor thinks that it maybe won't be, have any of those additional considerations. So I think that we've got two different opinions right there. So...
As far as correcting the policy, there's a paragraph in the salary ordinance that states essentially that's how it works. That paragraph needs to be deleted going forward. But that doesn't fix the errors of the past.
No, I think it, in my opinion, it clearly needs cleaned up. It really does. You know, there should, there should never be a situation in which you make a lateral transfer, doing the same thing and lose money.
Essentially what I'm saying is, when you move from one position to another, whether it's a lateral transfer or upward transfer, or busting yourself, or taking a lower paying job, you lose that. Can you order the? Yeah. And you ought to be able to take that with you wherever you go, whichever way you're going.
All right, so we've got this. If, if this paragraph were deleted from our salary ordinance, does that need to be on the agenda for review for next month's meeting? If that were part of a...
You can do it that way, I would recommend tabling that either to a date certain or until preceded the requested information and request that a member of the council place it on the agenda.
We could act on the salary ordinance without having it in our journal, right? If, if that was as, if that's what, what step we wanted to make?
I'm not sure what, what you're saying. I, I would, I would say you can, it would be done at a meeting, and I would suggest just tabling this until you've received the information and a request to make her to place it on the agenda.
Okay. Motion to table? Motion by Councilwoman Wager, seconded by Councilman Thompson, to table. Any more discussion?
Can we just, Gerald, sorry. Can we, did you, I don't know how we make formal requests to the auditor's office, but may we just confirm that you all, you will? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's already been tabled to committee, so we're tabling it in the full council. So, is it being tabled back to committee, or is it being tabled to the full council?
Request was made from committee for that information, so let's run it through committee again. Sound all right?
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I knew this was going to be so complicated for you folks. I would have given them $125. Are we done with it?
I'll kick it in. I'll help with you, Judge.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a roll call vote.
All right, no more comment then. Roll call vote on the motion to table this back to committee.
Mr. Schweitzer?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye. All right. That gets us to the last item, is reviewing maximum levies is required to be in the county council's minutes for property tax cap reports for all units. We will review our first meeting in August, estimate property tax limits, estimated reductions due to circuit breakers for each taxing unit. The county physical body will prepare and distribute a written recommendation for the taxing units for the county auditor. Or the county auditor will distribute the minutes of the meeting to all taxing units after the minutes are approved by the physical body. So, Mr. Efnor, do you want to...could you elaborate on this just a little bit?
I'm not sure there's a lot to elaborate on. Per statute, the council is directed to... Prior to the...or in the first meeting in August, to review the estimated levy limits provided by the DGF and to...and also the estimate provided by the DGF regarding the units, how the property taxes will be reduced by credits. I think that's the requirement. The county...or the council may prepare and distribute a written recommendation to the taxing units in regard to the review. In the alternative, the auditor is required to provide to each of the taxing units the minutes after they've been approved by the county council, which would deal with the comments regarding the review.
Okay. So, are there any other questions at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes.
There has to be a simple answer for this, and it's over my head. Page 34 is blank. So, should there be populated numbers on page 34, or is that a... I'm sorry. It's Vigo County Solid Waste Management. It should be zero. Thank you.
Thanks for reviewing it, Councilman Mann.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. President, you're not approving these. You're just making a record.
Thank you.
You have reviewed them, and each of the council members have reviewed them, and request comments and recommendations, if necessary.
Okay. All right. And moving on, I would like to...
Mr. President, may I make a motion? May I make a motion that we have reviewed the information that's being presented to us tonight? We've been given a chance to examine the numbers.
All right. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Councilman Mann, seconded by Ms. Benette. Any other discussion?
Does that meet the criteria, or do you want it cleaned up?
I think there just needs to be a record that the levies and the reductions have been reviewed as presented by the DGF, and the councils had an opportunity to comment and/or make recommendations. And if that's a motion, I think that covers it.
We think the word "examined" would cover that.
Well, that's what I'm thinking was, that we've examined them, or in agreement that we didn't have any other recommendations. It's what I thought to begin with. Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Auditor.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Ms. Bennett?
Aye.
Man?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Loudermilk?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye. Okay. At this time, I wanted to take the opportunity with the Annual Budget Committee to bring in at least three departments to express their budgets, relate their budgets to the full council. With the...I don't know what to say, but with the changes in the revenues, some of the things that keep evolving, I thought that those things should be brought. And if anybody brought before the full council on any of those things and opinions by any other members, it just seemed to be very important to move it from the committee to the full council. So, we've got...I believe we could start with the Sheriff's Department, and then we'll go to Highway, and then we'll save the judicial till the last. That's all right, okay?
President Morris, members of the council, John Plaschig, Ohio County Sheriff. Do you want me to do the same as we did in committee to go through everything?
Committee? Can you hit...I guess, let's start with the high points.
We'll start with the...
Requesting grant approval, requesting additional personnel.
All right.
Let's start there.
The sheriff's office applied for a federal grant to hire seven deputies, and we were approved that grant for $875,000. That equates to $125,000 per deputy for three years. The cost to county, as close as I can figure, and I've got retirement estimates now. I just figured that, or found that out today. The total cost would be $525,483 for salary benefits of seven deputies. The grant would cover $291,666.67 per year of that. So, each year of the three years, the county would be responsible for $233,338.16. And I talked with our retirement company today, and they said the retirement would increase the funding the county would be responsible for between $20,000 and $22,000 per deputy. So, if we were to hire seven, it'd be between $140,000 and $154,000. That requirement would not be due to them until 2023 if they were hired in 2021. I'm sorry? Yes, after February 1st of 2021. And of this grant, there's no requirement to continue funding these seven positions in 2024. So, the county would not have to pay that cost, and in essence, reduce those seven positions if they did not have the funding, or did not believe it was a worthwhile investment in the community.
And we have a rough cost to the county annually, $200 and some thousand annually, right? With the way the grant's structured?
Well, $233,338,000 plus $100 and...well, for next year, for the next two years, it would be $233,338.16 a year.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sheriff, and that's for seven deputies?
Correct.
And you have the vehicles?
Yes.
And you...and we don't have to buy the uniforms?
No, we buy the uniforms out of commissary initially, and then their clothing allowance takes care of that after they are hired.
What about their...you're suiting them up, and their guns, and their training?
We...all the training's out of commissary, so that's no additional cost to the county. The bulletproof vest is a cost that is by statute required to be paid by the county, and we don't pay that out of commissary.
Is that included in this figure?
It is not.
How pricey are those?
They're about $100 apiece.
Okay, so...okay.
We've got a budget for that, and we should be able to make that work. If not, I could finish that at the commissary as well.
What about radios and so forth?
Again, we do all that out of commissary.
You got that already?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a request for...are there more questions on that, for me?
Just to clarify, the retirement piece would raise the total to...
From the $233...
$370-ish?
In 2023.
In 2023, okay.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Did I read properly or improperly? There's a fourth year that the county would have to pay all of the salaries?
Correct.
So, it would be that full amount plus then the retirement?
Well...
The grant lasts three years, but the requirement is for hiring of course?
No, the grant requirement is after the fourth year, there's no obligation for the county to continue that. So, either you can fund the whole amount without the grant, or not fund it at all. It's up to the county. After the third year, so the fourth year.
So, there is no requirement for a year that the county has to pay?
Correct.
To keep all the...to keep the additional seven on?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sheriff, how do you expect...how many vacancies do you have now? Or will you have?
Currently, one.
You have one, and then do you anticipate vacancies within the next three, well, three years?
I know of only one person that's planning on retiring in that time, but we had one just retire or resign last week, two weeks ago, so they happened just...
So, that would be two, perhaps? But you could fill those...you wouldn't fill those vacancies, though, until you'd let the grant go ahead and pay for those?
Well, the grant stipulates that you could use them for new hires, or...
At the end of three years?
Well, currently, like in 2022, sorry, 2021, the grant stipulates you can pay for new hires or pay for unfunded positions previously. It doesn't show that you could pay for someone that, say, they retire now. It doesn't show that in the grant, so I don't believe that would be an appropriate use of that. I can verify, but it doesn't look like it is.
So, if it's an existing position, it won't...prior to the grant being received, it's not supposed to be funded by the grant?
Correct, as I read it, yes.
How many deputies do you have on the road at night?
It varies. Sometimes as little as three. The maximum will be five.
Would this be extremely beneficial for you, or...
It would be extremely beneficial for the residents in the county that don't have coverage, that wait a long time because of other things going on in the county with... You know, I'll use last week as a terrible example, but we had two homicides. And when something like that's going on, there's no one else to take calls. But again, luckily, we don't have that very often. But there's normal nights when you have a serious accident. Usually, two cars are tied up on that. If you've got three people working, you've got one guy out there. Sometimes states are to help, sometimes they're not.
One guy covering all the calls for the rest of the county?
And that's just if there's one serious accident. If there's that and it's something else, then we've got no one. So, you know, I said before to the committee that I think that's woefully inadequate. It's not a new problem. It's been there for many years. I don't know if it was addressed in the past, but I felt it was my duty to address it.
Is this all or nothing? This is not three deputies or four deputies, or...
This is whatever the council approves. If you say, I give you one deputy, then I contact the grant people and say, hey, we weren't approved the other six positions, and then see if that's allowable under their grant.
And...
My request is seven.
Okay, all right. And another question. So, if you have these homicides, does the state help you with that?
They helped us with crime scene on the last one. The first one, they did not. We didn't request it because we have the capability to do that.
Would they...do they have the response? So, if you had one in one end of the county, one in the other county, would they respond if you ask requests?
If they would. Yeah, if we ask them, they would. I know Sullivan County just asked them to do their homicide they had recently, because they're not equipped to do them adequately.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes.
One of these positions is an investigator?
Proposed, yes.
Can you describe what the benefits will be of having an additional investigator?
Again, last week kind of illustrates that pretty pointedly. We have, you know, seven detectives. One of those is a crime scene guy. And when you have investigations such as a homicide, there are a lot of things to be investigated, tracked down, verified, looked into, people to talk to. And that's just, again, a bad example, but normally with the caseload we have, it's pretty taxing for who we have with our detectives, the minimum amount that we have out there. So, what it would do would give, I guess, faster resolution to some cases. They wouldn't be waiting as long for an investigation to be completed. And a lesser caseload on the detectives we currently have would help them maybe pay better attention. Not that they don't, but give that case more attention than they would if they had other cases waiting that they had to get on as well.
Thank you.
So, is the crime rate increasing in the county?
The statistics I've seen recently are they've been decreasing.
I guess one of my things would be our population is decreasing. And... this has put some, no, it's actually, you know, I, I, it was the school board meeting now, not too long ago, and it was put, they were pretty concerned about, I think about one point two million dollars in revenue for students they weren't going to have, and and they looked, and they were also mentioning that they thought that was going to be a continuing trend. So I'm just bringing that up. Okay, you also had a request here for three more?
Well, it's actually two more, I'm sorry I misspoke when I was with the committee last time. The one part-time process server is basically just funds to allow them to be paid more, or we could hire another part-time person to do that, so. That's not with benefits, that's just a person that would go out and serve summonses or eviction notices, things of that nature. The two building security personnel, one of those is for community corrections, which we have manned now by a corrections officer from the jail. Because I saw a need to keep that building secure with the concerns from the judges and the safe parole office being there with people being in there not screened. So that's being covered right now by a correctional officer, which is not the intended purpose for that person, but I didn't want this to go uncovered and have something bad happen.
Okay.
And the other part would be a proposed rover in the courthouse, we've got two part-time courthouse security people now, and they are working way over their part-time hours because we have needs that aren't being addressed. So this would help cover that spot, which we are covering now with road deputies and reserves when they're available to cover those vacancies when we have a shift that needs covered.
Okay, alright. So we're talking about nine then total, not seven?
Correct.
Okay.
If you include the part-time, or the courtroom security, courthouse security. And the security sergeant is just a stipend for the, the person who is acting as a sergeant and just not getting paid for his additional duties.
We've got, what, thirty-eight deputies right now?
Correct.
So we'd add nine?
Well, those two would not be deputy, those two are civilian employees, they're not a sworn deputy.
Okay. Alright. So councilman man, how many, what percentage increase in, in the department is that?
We're looking at seven out of, when it is thirty-eight or forty?
Thirty-eight.
Twenty percent would be eight.
Yeah, okay. Substantial expansion, okay.
That's a quick question.
Sure.
You have a very good representative at Sheriff's Department working as you go into a building right next to us on Juvenile. He is not, or she, in this case it's a he, is not considered full-time? Is that correct?
We have one person assigned there full-time, we do, yes.
But then there are others?
That are part-time.
That are part-time?
Correct.
So in, in your total numbers then, is, is one of the, I'm going to just say forty, is one of the forty that individual, or is that a different entity altogether?
Separate, they're civilian employees. They're special deputies.
Okay. Very good representative of your department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, well, yeah, and I thought it was important that that this big of a item come before the full council. Any other questions? Yes, Spence Bennett?
Sheriff Classy, there was a discussion about the retirement request where I think it was Mr. Bramble suggested that you look into insurance as another way to do that, have you had a chance to do that?
I talked to John Wright from OSI, and I filled out a questionnaire with the stats that they wanted. I sent him an email Friday asking if I could get that before today, and I still haven't got that.
Okay.
But I am looking into that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So then, we have longevity, did you want to present that, or did you want your officer group to present that?
I mean, whatever you would like, Mr. President.
Well, you're here.
Okay. I'm the next best. The longevity request. The longevity, the proposed longevity request would be an additional one hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine, up from eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three, which is currently being paid for longevity. And we looked at other agencies and what their longevity rates were, and we kind of modeled ours after Tarryl City's longevity rates, and that is the amount that you have before you. I know on committee we discussed, I think you asked me if we had any of that left before they had their best of time on, and we had an example of that two weeks ago, one had to definitely leave for another job that paid more. But we do have, you know, people leaving. And I do believe that the pay does affect that directly with what the deputies have to do when they work. And the, I guess the current climate towards law enforcement in general, may have something to do with the one two weeks ago. If you have any questions on that request, I can answer, I have a breakdown of how many, I think it's in your packet too, how many deputies would be in each year that would get what? There are currently eight deputies that are maxed at twenty years. And we'll get that full amount, I think it's twelve thousand? It's eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars if they're maxed out at twenty years.
So you're thinking this would help with retention?
Yes.
So a request for seven new officers is going to have to be more than what it is specified for retention, right?
The-
I mean, they wouldn't be in the longevity scale originally.
Correct, they don't get anything-
But after two or three years, they start to receive that.
Sure.
So the longevity would be tied in with the new people as well to, for retention?
Yes.
And recruitment, okay.
So each year they basically get five hundred and ninety-seven dollars a year? To figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Questions?
I have one, are you phasing out of rank?
The first sergeant rank that we currently have, I'm not a big fan of, we had one vacancy in that position when I took over, and I don't, I will not promote anyone to fill those, we'll just let those go by either promotion or by attrition.
How many first sergeants do you have, you know?
Two, three, four. Five, one of those is in the jail, so four on the sheriff's office, sorry.
Do you know what the pay difference is?
What's the first sergeant's type? Because currently in each shift, there's lieutenant, well, not every shift, but lieutenant, a first sergeant, a sergeant, and five deputies, I thought that was kind of top-heavy, so it's going to have a sergeant and a lieutenant on each, each shift. Yes. So it would be just their additional per year on top of their regular salary? Yes, thanks.
Any other questions on longevity, or?
If I may, Mr. President, Sheriff, just help me through this.
Sure.
About ninety thousand dollars is currently in the funding?
For longevity?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So you're looking at one hundred and forty-five thousand this year?
Yes.
Next year, what would the anticipated amount be then?
Depending on if someone would leave or if someone would stay, just, if you figure six hundred dollars per deputy, thirty-eight deputies, twenty-four thousand, is that right?
Very close.
So it could increase twenty-four thousand each year. But the people that are maxed out would not get an increase, so I take that back. So the eight deputies that are maxed out, there's no increase for them. I've got zero at nineteen years, I've got three at eighteen years, so so for thirty, thirty times six, eighteen thousand dollars.
So they, this year would be the anchor year?
Correct.
And next year then is, I'm just going to say six hundred, is an extra six hundred dollars for all returning deputies?
With less than twenty years? Yes.
And what's the thinking about them not receiving it?
The twenty, the people over twenty?
Yeah.
That they've already reached their max, their maximum benefit, and I'm sure they would maybe ask for more, but I think this is adequate for, and this is modeled after what we had at city, it doesn't make it right, that it seemed to make people happy, but at twenty, they got their full benefit.
So it would, it would take one hundred and forty-five this year, and then roughly twenty-four thousand additional?
Or eighteen, but not counting those eight that are already maxed out.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, this is why I wanted everybody to come in and make sure and go over this.
Sheriff Classy, do you know about how many city police officers are on that longevity total?
Well, up until recently, there were a lot that were maxed out, but a lot left the last three years. Aaron would probably know better, David, who's coming or maxed out.
I mean, how many city police officers?
Oh, one hundred and thirty.
So one hundred and thirty at this amount, basically? Just over six hundred a year? Six fifteen, six twenty, somewhere there?
And if I may, just to qualify that, you know, law enforcement faces numerous challenges and obstacles that other positions don't. We work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Another department works holidays and weekends, or at least not many that I know of. Another department goes through rigorous, rigorous training we do, another department faces death almost daily. We also give back to our community, we have given back over twenty-six thousand dollars in donations in the last eighteen months, none of which is from tax dollars. We also sponsor and tend numerous community events, and men and women risk their lives protecting our community every day, I think they're worthy of this increase.
Okay, um, who's there, yeah, go ahead.
I would also like to say, on behalf of Councilman Louden, Miliff, Councilman Thompson, and Councilman, or Sheriff Classy, we're thankful for what you do.
You're welcome.
And then, it's kind of a slap in the face to the Sheriff's Department for one policing agency in the community to be, to have that and the other policing agency not, so hopefully we can bring that back up to scale, where they can be pretty competitive with each other.
Well, we'll say that there are different challenges, you know, city police has far greater call volume than we do, but that doesn't take away the risk that they face every day. But it is a benefit that helps retain people.
Okay, what else did we have that was in the sheriff's budget that we had?
Mentioned longevity and additional people?
On, on the retention, I think, I want to say I asked when we talked in the Personnel Committee about the retention impact in the THPD after this was implemented, and I don't know if you had that information at the time, have you been able to?
I did not reach out for that, I wasn't sure how many of the, I saw a lot of guys, a lot of guys that left were already at that twenty-year mark that I know of anyway. I don't know that many, I know there are some that left before they had their twenty on. And maybe, Aaron, I didn't, sorry, I didn't reach out to the city to see how many, the question she asked was after we raised our longevity to what it is currently at city, how many people that weren't, correct?
Did it impact, how did it impact retention?
Like the younger officers that weren't?
Right, did you find that your retention went up after longevity pay was implemented?
From my assessment, I feel like it has, I mean, you're always going to have, you're always going to have a few that leave for various reasons, whether they don't like the profession any longer, or they find something's more enticing, maybe a safer environment, whoever the case may be, but I think it's been a pretty good retention tool for the younger officers. I think once it was implemented, there was some veteran officers that were in the twilight of their career that saw that as an opportunity to go ahead and lead the profession and retire at the higher rate, because that, for us as city officers, impacts what your retirement benefit is. So with that, you're able to essentially have the opportunity to give the veteran officers an avenue to leave while at the same time bringing in and recruiting new officers that you hope will stay with you for twenty or twenty-five years, and then not, you know, invest that training in four or five years into them and training, and, you know, not only at the academy, but in-service training and outside schools that we send them to. You can retain those people and not have to reinvest into those new candidates that come in, because we were seen there for some time, and we were, it was hard for us to be competitive, I think, before, I say us, as a city police department, before this longevity. I think this really did impact it and help us to retain some of those younger officers, for sure. And I think it's a, it's a pretty good recruitment tool as well. You know, for the city police department, our, our base salary, and I think the Sheriff's Department is in the same boat, isn't near as comparable to other agencies throughout the state, that base salary isn't as high, so you can offset that with longevity schedules such as this, and it helps retain those individuals that otherwise might leave and go to a department where their base salary is eight to ten thousand dollars more starting out, where those lateral transfers, transfers that they tried to entice to come to them with retain their seniority rights, in a sense, to go to other agencies and get the higher pay right out of the gate, so I think this has been a good tool for us.
Has anybody, have we ever looked at, I mean, so the offsetting, an offsetting approach would be to do some kind of market study with some frequency to adjust base salaries and compensation to compare to others? I don't suppose that we've ever had anybody look at whether that makes more sense. Oh, yeah, I've got the whole pack, I was just thinking, we're trying to make sure that pay is profitable? I don't know if anybody's ever looked at the other way, another way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are consulting firms throughout the state that will do that for you, because I've seen those types of studies in the past. I don't know that the city police ever has, and I guess the Sheriff's Department has not done that. Again, that's, you're spending money to get that information, I guess it's a good negotiating tool to have if you're in a position to negotiate this department. But I don't know that we've ever done it at the city police. Imagine consulting firms to do something like that, it's probably pricey.
Isn't that what Irwin and Shealy was supposed to have done?
What's that?
Isn't that what Irwin and Shealy was supposed to have done with their?
I don't know what they were supposed to have done. That's before my time, Jim.
Yeah, when they set up that, this pay scale for the county, I think they
That was before us here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, good discussion. Did we have the that was the only two things that I had that stood out in the sheriff's budget? Is there something else? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Now, we've got highway. And the auditor has been working with the highway very diligently to and I think some of our concerns is funding for this one, for sure.
Correct, Mr. President, this is Councilman Larry Robbins, highway director. I've got a handout for you to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in working through the highway budget, there were some concerns that I had, there were some things that I believe needed to be addressed within the budget itself. And any report is done every year to project what highway funds are spent on every year. And it was very difficult for me to do that report this year in trying to find the numbers in the budget the way they were. So I thought this would be an opportunity to correct that, move some things around, to make it, make a little more sense, to make it easier to report and eat, and a little more transparent in the activities that we have. The other thing that we're taxed with now is fifty percent of our MVH funding is committed towards construction, reconstruction, or preservation activities, which handcuffs what we can do with salaries and so forth. I'd worked with the auditor's office on trying to move some salaries over local road and street. I was given some direction that salaries are not to be included in local road and street at all, so in the past, that has been something that's been done, so we moved that, I moved that all out of there and into MVH. I apologize for being late in submitting my budget. With the revenues the way they were and the way they are affected by the virus, it was something that I felt that I would, I would like to get a better handle on before I get too deep into the budget. So a little background about MVH, it is primarily sourced, financed by gas tax, which if nobody is driving around, nobody's buying fuel, that obviously goes down. So that's something that with, with the virus and the pandemic, it was something that I felt like I really needed to get a handle on before I dove too far into the budget. The state provided some numbers as well. And I believe, Colissa, one was that we got those sometime early July, mid-July?
We've got one version, we've got an updated.
Then they updated it, so across, across the state, this has been some concern to highway departments, cities, municipalities. Since this funding is directly tied to gas tax and sales, it is difficult to kind of pin down with, with this going on, so if we have another turn and things go south again, they order everybody to stay home, then it could obviously impact this as well, so. That being said, the budget has been submitted, I moved some salaries around to make, to clean it up a little bit, there were some things in Highway Two, which was maintenance and repair that I felt should have been in construction and vice versa. Tried to get all the administrative things into the Highway One, which is the administrative section. Anything that was maintenance and repair in maintenance and repair, anything in construction and reconstruction or preservation into the Highway Three line. I did have to do some things to tackle moving the salaries out of local road and street. And obviously with the forecast with that, so I'd also like to thank Cheryl for helping me work on some of that and track down some of those regulations on what we could, could and could not do with some of the funding and, and some clarification, and Jim helped as well. Some guidance on local road and street on what could be incorporated in there and what we can move around, so.
So your revenues for your MVH, you've got have you zeroed in here on a percentage you think that they're gonna be down? They're gonna be down?
I have done, so if you want, I can dive right into the handout if you would like. The left side is the budget estimates, and those are based on the state projections that they gave us.
That's what I was saying, yeah, state projections?
Yeah, those state projections were down about eighty, they were about eighty-two percent of twenty nineteen's revenue for fiscal year twenty nineteen from what the state had received, so they were they were forecasting numbers that were eighty-two percent of what we collected in twenty nineteen. That is what I used to develop the budget. I tried to keep everything as tight as I could when we come down through here, but I did a cash balance for what we had left over from twenty nineteen. What was left in operating, operating line there. I assumed that we would use the twenty twenty budget plus the encumbrances that were made last year. I don't anticipate probably spending a hundred percent of that budget, but for budgeting purposes, I wanted to account for it. I added in the twenty twenty revenues that the state was forecasting plus what we had already collected in the first six months of twenty twenty. Gave me an end-of-year cash of twenty twenty based on those numbers. After I completed the twenty twenty-one budget, I entered that number and used the twenty twenty-one revenue forecast from the state to come up with the end-of-year cash for twenty twenty-one, as you can see, that operating balance is cut dramatically. I did a similar, I did the same thing with local road and street as well. Those numbers were still on the eighty-two percent, the state did not adjust those at all. The other revenue stream for MVH is wheel tax, which is local, which I do not think should be down over, I think the last three months it's been down, but I think that's primarily because of the state and discussions, plus of the state, it extended registrations. So people had that extension, they just didn't, they just didn't go, you know, register their vehicles, so. I'm hoping that those numbers will balance out by the end of the year, but I did project a, a decrease in that revenue as well, just to make sure we accounted for everything. So that's the column, that's the two columns on the right, basically, budget estimates from the state projections. The box on the, oh, I'm sorry, on the left, on the right, the budget estimates are local revenue projections. This is something that I've been working with the auditor's office, they've been giving me updates as MVH comes in every month. Thank you, Judy, for that, I appreciate it. I actually got numbers even today, which were a little more encouraging. So in, in moving through those estimates, or those those revenues that were coming in, everything was pretty much on track through April, I'm sorry, through February, that was a, when February was distributed, it was in April. In March, we were, we received a fourteen percent reduction compared to twenty nineteen, in April, it was a twenty-six percent reduction. And then in May, it was a nineteen percent reduction. So those three months were a little alarming for what our projections were gonna be for the rest of the year. I did some projections on that, but without knowing that, it, it's just kind of a shot in the dark, and I think that's why the state I believe aired on a little bit of caution with giving us that eighty-two percent number to work on. The numbers that then come in in August were actually just a little bit up from twenty nineteen, so that is encouraging, that hopefully the numbers are turned around, but I mean, as you've probably are aware, the traffic has picked back up, everyone seems to be back to normal, whether we should or not, that, that's, that's the fact of the matter, we are, traffic is picking back up. I use that to estimate basically a ten percent reduction in revenue for the last four months of the collections and revenues for the year to come up with the numbers that are in that box on the right. I use a similar ten percent reduction for the rest of the year. In my opinion, I think that's a little conservative, since our numbers came back up to pretty much what they were in twenty nineteen. But I would still like to err on the side of caution with this, hoping that they will be, they will be higher than that and that this will, this will not be as much of an issue. So similarly, we go down through those budgets, both of those, they leave an operating balance at that point of eight hundred and seventy thousand in MVH and six hundred and ten thousand roughly in local road and street. So that is a better projection, and I think that's closer to where we are, but I wanted to show you both scenarios, so you were aware of it.
If I take fourteen percent at twenty-six percent, nineteen percent, divided by three, it comes eighteen point six percent. And the state was projecting eighty-two percent.
Correct.
Okay. But we should be up on those revenues as we go through the rest of the year here now. Okay.
Originally, the state in March was coming out with a forty percent number that we should be working out, looking at a reduction in revenue of forty percent, which was, made a lot of people panic, I kind of wish they hadn't have done that right off and kind of took that, you know, into consideration, looking at that. So when that number came in at fourteen percent and then at twenty-six, I was, you know, I was a little relieved, to be honest with you.
Well, at some point, the council's gonna have to put their finger down and say, this is what we estimate, and then go with those things. And so that's what we're trying to gather the information for.
Correct.
Are there any questions of highway?
Are any of these, Larry, are any of the budgeted amounts project costs, and are any of those discretionary in your mind? Do we have any room in this part of your, or is all of that stuff in edit or, or somewhere else?
Most of, all the, all the capital projects are in edit, so those are projects that could be put off if we needed to, but I mean, those are all things that have an impact on our community. As far as highway goes, the only thing, in my opinion, that could be reduced, which would also hurt that fifty-fifty number, is the paving and repairs line item, which I did reduce from years past to make sure that we, you know, were trying to get the, you know, the budget back under control. I did also move a couple of high I moved, I moved equipment new, which is three hundred and fifty thousand, which was in MVH, I moved it over to local road and street since that fund was in a little better shape. I did increase that to four hundred thousand because of the need that we have in some of our equipment. We're in need of a, a new grade-all, the grade-all down south has been in the, in the shop more than it's out on the road. We are new, in need of some mowers as well. We had one mower go down this summer, caught fire. It is not able to be salvaged at this point. So, and there's a need for some of the other mowers are probably, I think they're estimated, they're about twenty years old, four of those sidearm mowers, so those are gonna start to be in the shop more than they are on the road, they have been in the past, but it's something that's definitely that, something that I need to look at replacing. That way, those things, you know, we can keep our roads as safe as we can out there and keep those weeds mowed, I mean, it's been a wet season this year and it's been hard for us to keep up with that mowing with everything else we've been having going on. Other than that, I really don't think there's anything as far as substantially that we can cut. I'm gonna impose my own kind of restrictions on some of these funds, that some, some own goals that I have. Obviously, this is my first year taking over the highway department right before this whole pandemic kind of sprung out, so it's been a challenge, it's been an experience. But I'd like to look at some of these line items and go into the future and see how they, how they shake out and how exactly we can tighten that budget up as best we can, but still provide the maximum amount of services.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the highway department? Well, we've got Larry here. I think, I think that the state is projecting this, that revenues go back up fairly maybe quicker than some of the other revenue sources.
Yeah, I think in, in just looking at everything and comments that I've, I've seen from other highway departments across the state, the traffic is going back up. Shipping is a big part of that. Keeping things on the shelves and everything, I think that's gonna continue to drive that. I do not anticipate any, any month being probably as bad as what April was. I just don't think as a, as a community or as a society, we can sustain that, and I don't know if it'll actually ever get back to that, so I think there'll be some hopefully we don't get to shut down again at that point where that, that's an impact or that's a possibility, but, you know, I'm anticipating something in the middle. So maybe around that fourteen percent range that we were seeing in March and possibly in May. So I think the ten percent number for the rest of the year and a conservative approach for next year, I think we can monitor those revenue streams and make sure that we're, you know, I kind of keep my finger on the pulse of this thing and make sure there's nothing we need to do in the meantime, or any adjustments that we need to make to the budget, so we don't get into a situation where we can't fund it.
Moving target. Any other questions, council people? All right, well, thank you very much, Larry, appreciate it. Appreciate your work, working with him too, Cheryl. Okay, at this time, we've got some information from judiciary and presentation on, what we want to call a presentation on, on what you're thinking about? Could be done?
Thank you for allowing us to come back, Sarah Mulligan, Bill Watson. We were here, I guess, a month ago and spoke to the committee and indicated what we were asking for, just a couple of things, and I'd be glad to go over my entire presentation. But we're asking for another pre-trial screener for criminal rule twenty-six, and I'll let Bill fill in a little bit more about that. In addition, we're asking for two other positions, one's a contract employee, who would be a forensic nurse practitioner to serve the courts, and then also a therapist to do assessments over the jail. And I think since the last time I saw the committee, Virgil Mackey spoke with someone from the Department of Mental Health, when someone is found to be incompetent to stand trial, they're committed to the Department of Mental Health for forensic beds, and those are state hospitals, and that's a legal process. And Virgil received a call from the Department of Mental Health indicating that Beagle County was one of the top counties sending people to those state hospitals. Based on the population per hundred thousand, state average to send people for various counties in the state would be four people per one hundred thousand, and two thousand and eighteen, Beagle County sent ten people to the state hospital, and then the next year was seven. I think they were wondering why we were, there was a greater number in Beagle County. And tomorrow, I'm participating in a webinar with Dr. George Parker through the Department of Psychiatry, the Department of, for the IU School of Medicine, and his numbers sort of suggested the same thing. So I think the court's request is to address some of those things, not just those people who are seriously mentally ill and committed to the Department of Mental Health, but also those people who suffer from a dual diagnosis, who are in the system. They have substance abuse disorder as well as mental health. And that's a population that we see, I think, repeatedly, maybe, or to Mr. Thompson, Detective Thompson, Detective Aaron Lotte-Muller can agree with that. We have some repeaters who are, have, are dual diagnosis, and they're difficult to treat. I think it kind of is in line with some of the things that Bill has planned and has planned, and also the council members who have traveled to a diversion center rather than Rockford or other towns. And I think it's a, it's a problem in every county in the state of Indiana, it's a problem nationwide, forensic beds, or the request for forensic beds and mental health treatment is up and the ability to treat may be down. So I think I'll ask Bill to maybe talk about the pre-trial screeners and give you up to date on that.
Thank you. The pre-trial program began on January one, probable rule twenty-six.
The pretrial program began on January 1, probable rule 26. Got off a really good start, and we were very happy with what we're seeing. We still are. The unfortunate COVID-19 forces makes it change how we supervise those pretrials coming out of jail with that program. But as far as our role for the courts in the pretrial, we have continued from day one to assess and evaluate seven days a week in jail. We go in every day, the pretrial screener in there, and evaluate what's in all the new arrests, determine who is appropriate within the guidelines of the pretrial program that could be released when they go to court based on the judge's decision without bond. They get a report, screener every morning on people. Background information, prior criminal history, various information to get paint. So they have something other than a person with a charge standing in front of them. I think it's been very successful. We're sitting right now, we're supervising approximately 400 people in pretrial in January. Those people are part of our designated group. We also are supervising people in pretrial that were never part of that group, judges have seen fit, but they also come out of jail. People who are identifying that even though they may not meet the exact criteria, the judges will still releasing them and putting them into a part of the pretrial program to reduce the number of people that are in jail they're seeing. For us to continue to go forward, program expansion, which is something we've talked about, bringing even more eligible people in the program, maybe 12 people. We would need enough screener to do that. We have not even really started to progress, and the judge attests to this. We've not even really began to progress city court people that are going into jail currently or people that have pending city court cases, if I can say. We have people right now in the felony court that because they have a pending city court case, they've not been eligible for the program. We want to bring that population in and not have that city court case being a factor. But if we do that, by last check, approximately about three weeks ago, when we were last here, at that time, we would increase our numbers over in nine from another 85 to 100 that we yell at, that we repeat through the program.
Right now, our target population does not include anybody who has a prior criminal history. And a lot of times, that includes people with a city court case, which may be a driving wall suspend or something like that. So we're talking about maybe expanding our target population.
And once you do that, that's going to drive up the numbers that are currently trying to evaluate, look at it, see people seven days a week, and then quickly gobble them up, put some things in place to try to help that vision. But I think all in all, the program is getting the right people out of jail much quicker. On average, I would say most of these people that we're getting out now, they're probably staying in there anywhere from three to five days. We're getting them out now in a day and a day and a half when they're getting out of jail with the pretrial program. So if you look at the fact of keeping those people there and additional three, three and a half days across county, that that's not occurring now, I think that's huge, fed down to those numbers. We're also seeing a very, very low rate of free expansion by those people that are getting out, which once again tells us that we're identifying the right people to the court to release. Our offenses resulting in violation of the program are basically just those people who get initially released don't come to sign up for the program by the way. That's the violation. We're not seeing a lot of the pretrial people that we're identifying. They're not violating and getting to arrest a lot of them. So we're getting them out of jail sooner, but they're staying out of jail to this point. You know, there's still people to violate, you know, you're wrong, but they're not violating a large number at all. So it shows the program is working to have a impact, getting the right people out of jail. And I think for us to take the next step from that and zooming our normal operation and trying to have another screener added to that program, just the three that are there. The way it operates with them now, they work seven days a week. They take turns taking a weekend, whatever hours they work on weekend, I'm forced to cut those hours back out for them a week. So say I've got a screener, puts in five hours on weekend, he or she is automatically five hours less available. They start Monday somewhere during that week. I've got to get those five hours back and let them go. So, you know, that that impacts our ability to operate it. And put it to the best of our ability.
Last year, we asked for how many screeners?
We asked for, we asked for four screeners. The state provided two and the county funded one. So what we're asking for this year is to just add an additional screen. Get us a court screener at this point. And I think our volume and our numbers clearly show that there's a key to that position. Understanding the county's fiscal position, but I think this is a program that we've all had a lot of hope for, and I think it has done what we wanted to do, identify the right people to get them out of jail much sooner than may or may not have been occurring in the past, just because there was not the best information available all the time for the courts to write that decision. We're no longer looking at just a person who might be in front of Judge Mulliken with a level three felony or a level four felony. They're seeing more about that person than just that charge on a paper to help them make that decision. Well, yeah, it might be a level three, but really, they don't have the background, they've got a lot of, you know, positive things in their favor. They have a job, they have a support system. Let's take a chance if that's this person out without bond. They may not have a bond that's required for a level three. Those people are getting out of jail now where they were sitting. So I think that's a true, this is true support for how the courts will implement the program, prosecutor's office, everyone a part of that court system, working with them. Sheriff's Department, they've been very helpful with the screeners, getting them in and out of the jails quick in the morning. So I think the whole system has adapted to the pretrial concept, working with well right.
Well, in COVID, we've had to make some modifications in terms of the pretrial screener. And I think everybody's working pretty well together. We're using video court, as I said before, Zoom. We've actually moved to Zoom. We've put in 65-inch TVs in all the courtrooms. So people appear on Zoom, and then I have a computer there. I think, you know, we're going to continue to use that.
As we get back to when the county gets to open the building again at some point in time, well, then we have a part of our pretrial program that we've never really been able to implement because as we got it ready, which is our kiosk tracking system, COVID hit, closed down the building, so we never really had a chance to implement that phase of our kiosks. So we're excited about implementing that.
The other part of my presentation for the nurse practitioner and then the therapist who do assessments, I think fits pretty well with what Bill has planned. I don't know if you want to talk about that? Which we've talked at length about mentally ill, dual diagnosis.
With what we plan, as as most of you know, we've operated a program on a grant state for just about $400 with the sheriff's department that tried to address opioid addiction and those types of things. There are a lot of things addressing opioid addiction right now. With our programs and the people that we're supervising in the court system, we see opioids at a smaller number compared to methamphetamine is still a huge problem we supervise. Our drug screen numbers, information also supports that methamphetamine is still a much greater problem for the offender population we're serving. Not to say that opioids are not a problem, but for the people in the court system, they are still not testing in high numbers for opioids like they are for methamphetamine. It's still a major problem. Most of those people we determined, they also have, as Judge Mulliken talks about, dual diagnosis. They have substance abuse addiction, they have a mental health addiction or a mental health issue. Most of them treat their own mental health issue by substance abuse addiction. They self-medicate. They don't get any money. They don't get the proper treatment. They don't get diagnosed quickly enough until they start using drugs. The law enforcement, Andy, I know, tell you, Councilman Thompson and Loudermilk, their days as patrolmen, when I was a young probation officer, we've all seen this as a problem that's been in the correctional system since the early 90s, when I started dual diagnosis, people with mental health problems constantly getting rearrested, cycling through our system. Law enforcement spends their time rearresting them over and over. They go into jail, set in jail, long periods of time while everyone tries to figure out what to do with them. They go back and forth. Judges then try to put them in a community-based program. Here we go. We've got this person back on the street again, a community-based program, and we're struggling to get them the appropriate mental health treatment or subsequent treatment they need in a timely manner. They get in these programs, they may do okay for a short period of time, they struggle, they get rearrested. Boom, here we go again. Law enforcement's picking them up, back in jail, set in jail again for a while while everyone tries to figure out what to do with them. Go back and forth, they go back to one of the community-based programs again. This is a continual cycle until at some point they go to prison. But they don't stay in prison forever, and they don't stay very long. Here they come back to the community again, and they start this all over again, and it's the same people continually going to court, going to jail, back to our program. What I've asked for is funds. I've asked the state to allow me to convert their almost $400,000 to help address this problem, as well as I've asked the council for money to help this. I want to take the work release component where a lot of these people come to and turn it into an intense, an intensive therapeutic work release community. I've met with the Department of Corrections. They're highly interested in it, where we start providing these people while they're in a structured, controlled setting with case managers, the social workers, and through practical services with mental health and substance abuse people. We start while they're there, getting them on the appropriate mental health medication, getting them the appropriate diagnosis, free, addressing their substance abuse while they're in our control to stabilize them instead of saying, okay, here you are, you're in work release home detention or probation. Now go find a job and be a good citizen while you don't really address those people.
And, you know, one of the biggest problems with people who are dual diagnosis, if they're released, they're referred for an assessment, the assessment may be in 30 days, that's for substance abuse, and a mental health assessment for 60. And we're talking about a lot of things that can happen in 60 days. So the connection between being referred and meaningful treatment is really critical.
We're hoping with what I'm asking here, we have, we take that 30 and 60, at that window down in a matter of days. I'm talking two, three, four days, but we find a way. And and I have ideas and have met with people talking about getting that mental health treatment for assessments and evaluation much sooner so we know what we're dealing with to get them, so we can start addressing that problem immediately instead of, okay, we're going to get you an appointment, maybe four weeks. Well, as the judge said, most of them don't last four weeks. They go right back out on the street again, involved, they put so much they're close to, on arrest again, and here we go again.
Well, and and one of the things about having a nurse practitioner and someone who does assessments, working directly for the court, that'll be a one-stop shopping. They'll have their assessment, they have they, if they have a substance abuse problem or a mental health issue, then they refer to the nurse practitioner for medication, stabilized, and then move on. You know, I can't control the number of forensic beds in the state of Indiana, but we could do something about it, things that's a jail, to strengthen our community mental health.
We, I mean, I've been here a number of years, basically. This has been a continual problem for our community and our correctional system and court system that has never gotten better. It's only getting worse. It's not getting better. It's not going to get better until we can attack it and really say, we, the county, are helping ourselves to try and address the issue. We can count on all of our outside influences and forces, but we really need to start guiding our direction with this population because they're the people who are all asked or being asked to do something with. And we're kind of, at times, like I said, we're spraying down a forest fire with a garden hose sometime, these people. And we all get frustrated why we continue to see them. It's not always their fault with the mental health issue. They get rearrested, they get in trouble, they don't think like everyone else does. And until we can truly provide them appropriate care and try to get onto that track, most of them are not going to get there or they're not going to stay there if they don't have the court system and we're not providing the service, that's going to be better. You know, I have a lot of people who come through work, they find a job, they might work 30 days, work five days, and they lose that job because they're mental health issues. They they, you know, they have anti-personalism or paranoid schizophrenia. And these are people that are also trying to use drugs at the same time to make themselves feel better. And, you know, those aren't the best employees because they're not going to find really good jobs or they're not going to find jobs at all until they finally get rearrested or just decide, look, I'm not going to do this if I'm going to take off this beard. And then they get arrested. And as I say, here we go again. They're back, like the merry-go-round, but they never get off. They just take short breaks, but they never get off of it. And, you know, the dollars that's required to do this, it's not cheap, and I know that it's a tough decision. But we can keep doing what we do if we're okay with that, and that's fine. We'll continue to do that. Unfortunately, we've got pretty good advantage that way on the right leg, but we can take a shot at it and say, look, we're going to try to do this. If it doesn't work, then we can step back from it and say, okay, it didn't work, but we know we made an honest effort and gave our best of our ability. You know, I think it's time to try to do that. I mean, what the courts are asking for, so we truly know the minute they get in the jail, what their problems are, how we need to address them. And when they move from the courts to me, the community, I say, me, probation, correction, whatever, that we know that we're providing them that long way to try and keep them in jail. That's right. Yes, yes. I have met with the Department of Corrections about the conversion of their almost $400,000 to this program. They were very, very receptive and supportive of it. I should hear from them, hopefully, within the next 60 days about us using dollars that way. I can tell you that Senator Ford met with me with them, Councilman Loudermilk did, as I, as the county council representative and advisory board. He also met the Department of Corrections and discussed this program with them, as well as things he had tried previously. He started addressing this months ago, the continual process of people with mental health issues in jail. So, you know, I think I've got people locally supportive of it, state team for it, the medical doctors of the Department of Corrections, I've talked to her. She thinks it's a wonderful idea. She said that the state recently started the same type of thing within one of their prisons right before the COVID hit and kind of slowed things down for them. But once again, addressing dual diagnosis that is driven in many cases by amphetamine, that's amphetamine. It's it's a difficult population to deal with and can't address the mental health side of it. They're going to continue, they're going to get arrested, they're going to continue to go into jail, rotate in and out. And they're the people that are staying longer in jail. They may not be arresting more people, but they're arresting these same people. And unfortunately, the courts prosecutor half believe them there longer because they're really struggling with antipsolution for them, other than just putting them back in the program or they...
We have to really address the medication, getting people medicated in the jail. And that's, I mean, we have to do it while they're in the jail and assess quickly so we know what their issues are. It's the only way to stabilize them and place them somewhere else or stop them going to forensic beds at the state hospital.
And and our hope is, once that happens in jail, when they come to us, that we get them started in the state system program that will help them pay for their medication, pay for their healthcare, and then the additional staffing with us would help monitor them, make sure they continue to do that. So many of our people now get, they qualify, they get productive eligibility for the hip program. Basic health insurance, it's great. They walk out of there for a number of days, they have health insurance, they can get their healthcare to progress. Problem, people were talking about that have these dual diagnosis issues. Problem, people we're talking about that have these dual diagnosis issues, when the rest of the patient shows up, they need to fill out to keep that eligibility. They don't know what to do with it, they're still on their health. They throw away, and they call it a bad person, or I'll show you amphetamine, but that makes me feel better. So we need a step-by-step process, give these people more intensive, individualized assessment help and to keep them doing the right thing. You know, so many times we see them, the biggest problem we get with them after a while, the ones we stabilize are, well, they don't think they need their medication because they feel better. Then the challenge is keeping them on the medication because they say, oh, I don't need it anymore. I feel good now. Yeah, you feel good, take medication, mind, not use the drug. So that becomes the next challenge, that, this program, getting them to think they don't need medication. So it's a process, it's a long process, it's not a silver bullet. But as I say, we can keep doing what we're doing, act this head on, face this tongue. And I think it is time for six, five.
Glad to answer any questions?
You guys ought to have some questions. This is kind of a lot, I think.
I'll just say that I've talked to and met with Mr. Watson several times about this. And, you know, everything he's saying is, I mean, it's what Councilman Thompson and I have experienced in our careers. I mean, it is a never-ending cycle. The only thing that I would add that Bill didn't, as these individuals that are dual diagnosis and have these issues, they go into jail and they soon become released and they unfortunately commit more crimes and go back to jail. The one thing I would add to that is, it seems each time they do that, they're not only picking up new charges and you have new victims, whatever the offense that they're responsible for, alleged to have committed is, but they tend to get worse each time, too. It's progressively worse. So it's not that they're stabilized and they continue to be here, they just continue to drop, unfortunately. And as you said, they go to prison eventually and they come back into our communities worse off than when they left most times. So it is a very serious problem. You know, in talking to Bill, this is a very well-thought-out plan in my assessment. I know, you know, Bill's been doing this for quite some time. Like you said, more years than he'd like to admit. But with that, he has that experience. I know there's people from all over the state that reach out to him for his advice quite often. So he's, he is a very valuable tool for us to have in this community. I know he's, he is sought out throughout the state. And as I said, this is a well-thought-out plan. And as Bill said, we can continue to do what we're doing and manage it, but it's not the right thing to do at the end of the day. It just isn't for these people that are having these issues. As you said, you have individuals that get out and maybe they have an appointment four or five weeks out with a mental health provider, and they may or may not go to that appointment. But a lot of times what we see is that they're reoffending during that time. They're going back out and they're using whatever substances they need to use to self-medicate, and it becomes a bigger problem and they don't make those appointments. So if we can be proactive and have individuals on staff that we can control and control that schedule, the immediate needs that they present in terms of getting whatever medication they need to get stabilized, whatever counseling they need to get stabilized, then we need to do that. You know, for me, as one member, I'm in full support of this plan. I know it's, there's a lot of money involved in this, but it makes sense and we have to be proactive. We just can't, we can't rely on others to get this done for us, quite frankly. And I think that, you know, this is a good approach to kind of take things in their own hands and try to make the most of it. And if we can get DOC on board and some other elected officials at the state level, that will be beneficial as well. And I think we're kind of trending in that direction, if I'm not overstating.
The right, we're very interested, they were excited about the idea of, and well, I think, again, Dr. Dawson, that's what DOC chief, Aaron Thera, chief of that at E D, said this, want to address amphetamine use issue on House, because this, because this population is not only a problem in Indiana, it's nationwide, because it's not one way, because I've seen it for 25 years, which is not even better.
You know, one question I don't think we ever asked, how long till this could be up and running?
States fund, technically, they would become available January 1st if they award the dollars. But if they give me the dollars and say, we're going to award these next year, I want them, then I'm going to ask them to let me start now. Current money could forget it, just going to revitalize or reutilize purpose, say, let me start this program now.
And I think our request was for January 1st, that was for staff next year, same with the pre-trial screener.
And I think if they're going to fund this, then I think I have a great chance with both the court and my conversation with them, with letting them, let me take their dollars now and get it going. So when the dollars roll around again first of January, if we're not starting then, we're continuing court and going and fast pay.
Then where, like, where would this therapist, where would that take place? How, where would you do that?
They'd be working for the courts, but they'd be going to the jail primarily assessing people quickly, immediately, as soon as they're ordered, and then communicating directly with the nurse practitioner for medication requests, stabilization.
And that meant?
Just one-stop shopping. They don't have to get out and make an appointment, wait 60 days, reassessed by both quickly.
And then that information would follow to us. When we got it, then we would immediately set them up with continued mental health support at that point in our program and begin medical and substance abuse people, making sure they're following up on any medical needs. But then we would also begin that substance abuse program as well. As many of the psychiatrists that I've spoken with and doctors say, we can't address the substance abuse issue, we'll be addressing the mental health. They said, have to address the mental health, then begin substance. So it's critical that the mental health piece begin with them as quickly as possible, and then we can start working to address substance. The mental health piece is the biggest challenge. It's the biggest challenge with drug abuse problem, substance, but mental illness with the drug. It's a complete problem. They just don't even know, most of them, what they're doing is wrong, or they have no concept or understanding of value. It's sad, it really is, to have it like in jail.
Well, Aaron said, I mean, we're either going to pay this money out in, you know, in policing and incarceration and prosecutors and public defenders or in helping people get better. I mean, we're going to pay it out one way or another.
Mine's will be proactive.
Law enforcement costs alone responding, I don't have those figures, but I know these two gentlemen, hey, responding to the same people over and over and over, same thing. And sometimes I know from one of my days with probation officer, it's multiple times a day to the same person. So eventually, something occurs that they say, okay, this person's got to go to jail. You know, and the resources spent just running back and forth. Then once they're in jail, they sit in jail for numerous days and feed them, house them, provide their medical care, only for them to come out to the next phase of the system where they spend a short period of time and then they're right back there again and we're feeding them, outing them, providing them medical care, and never really getting to the root of the biggest problem, the mental illness.
And generational as well. I hate to tell you, I've been around long enough that I see that generations come along.
So have I. And some of them that I started out as a young probation officer with, they're still in the system today. And most of them, okay.
Question?
Okay, I have a general statement, I think I have a question. But going back to Donna Williams' email at the beginning of our meeting, this is something this council can invest in right here, right now, that can move our community forward with meth addiction and things like that. A quick example of what you had mentioned, Bill. I had texted Councilman Lautermilch and Councilman Thompson last week asking them to arrest my uncle because he was the Clay County escapee. He had made it from Clay County to West Terre Haute and stole a car. I mean, and I'm actually texting people, my friends, who I consider friends who are police officers, and begging them to arrest him before he hurts himself or hurts somebody else. He spent 23 years in prison. Incarceration did nothing for him. I mean, and he's a serious violent felon. I'm not saying he didn't deserve it. He was aggressive, he shot at police officers, he is mentally not there, okay? So incarceration is not the answer. But for us to invest in something to get people help, this is the smart move to take. Before we get to a deferral center, before we get to anything like that, this is something we should invest in to see if it's going to work, which with Bill's leadership, Judge Mulliken, the rest of the judges, I think it will work. Second, I have a huge problem with the Hamilton Center. I was wondering if, where they become involved in your guys' line of work? I mean, for?
Well, we are a community mental health provider. I mean, there's other places in town.
I've met with other doctors and I've talked with people in Hamilton Center and others about the need and how some, like this past, these past track. I've looked at other possible, those have been offered to me, it's just been offered to me.
Well, I guess my general statement is, I hope you do this independently on your own. And you take care of it. You don't rely on other organizations and you do it yourself.
That's what I'm asking, the county to invest, this is the county's problem and I am the county's ability. Time to, we, the county, tap our problem and we control the correction, go to that problem and not rely on others. We tell others what we need and want, and they can't provide that for us. And we go seek people who will and who can, and they're out there. There's people that are doing it. We just have to go get them. And I'll go find, this is the direction we as a county want to go. Then with the support of the judges, rest of the corrections system, people in the room. We'll go find, I'll go find. If there's people there, we have to look for them.
I think a small?
You know, for my family recovery court, I didn't want to rely on referring people for assessments for 30, 60, 90 days. So I hired my own person and they're assessed within a matter of hours days. And that, it means that they're assessed and they're referred, which is the difference between reuniting families and not.
The small business approach to the local option income tax would be, we get estimates to build a jail. We build the jail, we operate it for a year, and we don't expend more tax dollars until that's done. That's the way I look at this. So for us to fund a program and not use public safety dollars, not use our local option income tax dollars, but to fund a program like this and then see what happens after a jail has been fully operational for a year or two, then we can step back, research, diagnose, see what's going on, and then decide if we want to do something with public safety dollars. But to invest in something right now that will work by county employees seems more pertinent to me than trying to find something to invest in with our public safety money when we can just pay for this and get started.
I think the big thing here for us, too, is it's a lot of money from the county side, but the state is willing to listen to this and allow us to use their money, their side, too. And I think that, that shows a large vote of confidence for the county and an impact. You know, one of the things that I know Councilman Lautermilch, when he was there, heard him talk about, they appreciated the fact that we were willing to look at the dollars we were getting and look at the process and say, look, we're not getting a bank for our buck here. We're not getting, we're not getting the best result for this money, which is what I've talked about with Councilman Lautermilch and others, Judge Mulliken, the corrections board. Where can we get the most use of our money? And time and time again, we've gone back to the same thing. Chief Public Defender Gretchen Allen, we've all talked about this. Dual diagnosis is our problem, swallows our, it's those people. And when we suggested that, or when I suggested that to the Department of Corrections with their funds, and they said, we hear you, we applaud the fact, evaluated it and realized you're not going to just be throwing money at someone, it's not your money. If we can support that, understand. So I think that means a lot. They believe in this, you know, our community believes in it. We talked about things differently, but Judge Mulliken is talking about beginning it at jail, moving it into the next phase, moving it into the phase where they go back into the community. But yet they've had that help instead of six weeks, five, just after they get out of jail. We start it while they're there, get the process then, and their chance to success are much greater. You know, they're not all going to succeed, know that, that's unrealistic. But I think we can do a whole lot better for our numbers than just recycling, okay, we'll hold you here a while, we'll hold you here a while, we'll hold you here a while, okay, now's time. You know, it's just, it's frustrating for everyone involved in this system. And, you know, courts, prosecutors, law enforcement, everyone's forced to continue to do the same thing even though we all know there's got to be something. This is a chance. We look at it, we take our chance, and now we'll try something different.
Well, and I'd like to say, too, Councilman Miss Pennetta, I appreciate your effort in showing us the possible surplus. And I appreciate the Care Not Cages emails that we got and all that stuff for us to invest in something. But for me personally, as one person on this council, this investment is right. And investing in something based off of emotions, when we may have a surplus at this point in time, is not the right thing to do. And that's just my personal thing.
I think we've, I think we've heard a very good foundation for your program, and we appreciate that you've put all the work in it that you have. I know that you've worked on it a long time. You know, we've spent a couple of years here hearing the prosecutor and the defenders in here begging for more and more and more and more and more help, you know, and that's a never-ending tale. And this, I think, is a solution to their problem as well.
I think so.
This started about a year ago when the court made the decision to go with a more unified approach and created the position that I now hold in the correct report services and said, we kind of want everyone doing the same thing, the same way. Well, when they made the decision to do that, the judge has asked me to move into that role. You know, it laid the groundwork for us to start doing something. Of the handoff now to probation, where probation is under that umbrella. When they leave community corrections, jail, and go through the community-based programs, move to probation, we have that smooth handoff now where that can be coordinated all the way through. It's no longer departments in silo. We are all one group under that umbrella now, working together. That was a big part of the court's decision. They laid the groundwork for that, they decided to go that department. And with the more utilization of the evidence-based practice, cross-provation, the other program for pre-trial, the county's willingness to fund pre-trial, county's willingness to provide more probation office, have allowed us to put things in place to take this next step, which go after the dual diagnosis that population, that overrun thing. So it's been every, it's been a county. People may not see it that way, but I look down at the prime act, couldn't have done that, we couldn't even have talked about it a year ago. Gretchen, the public defender's office telling me, no, we need to look at this population, we need to look at them. So I think the community as a whole has done it, just a lot of people don't feel it. And it has been everybody.
Yeah, and I do want to say, too, that this can't be done without us having the money that we were willing to step up and raise taxes a bit and say, we have to have money to run this county in a decent way. We have to pay the people who work here a decent wage so they will continue to have a life where they can pay their bills and feed their children and educate their children and raise the quality of life in this community. And that you can create these programs to save lives in our community. That doesn't happen with no money, you know, and it takes some guts to step up and raise taxes, let me tell you. And it takes some guts to step up and raise taxes, let me tell you.
I know.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Mann.
Mr. President, thank you. Have we been given a 4B for the county general? And also, will there be a PSAT tab? Okay, thank you. So I want to make sure I'm understanding these two sheets properly, Mr. Watson. And Kalissa, I'm looking, and I got to make sure I ask my question at the right time. Kalissa, this form that you gave us has both personnel requests from the committee hearing and what's been submitted to the council for the annual budget committee.
I'm hoping to be able to-
Okay, thanks.
I want to do a clarification, but maybe you're going to ask the same question.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, you can go ahead. I just want to get clarification, make sure we had everything included.
Because I want to, I want to make sure our numbers are adding up here because we are, we're hearing something tonight that is in light. The first page is not from county general? Is that what I'm hearing tonight? This first page is not county general?
That's the work release therapeutic. That's what I'm asking the county for funding for.
And I'm saying it's not from county general.
Well, it's to be determined. No, I mean, it's not under court's, but they're going to have to determine where they're going to fund it from.
We're going to, yeah.
You want this under court's? This is the part that-
That's not.
The work release therapeutic would not be part of the court. No, that would not. That would be a part of, that would be the council issuing dollars for the community correction. They have never done. That would be funding a piece of the correction.
They're going to have to determine a funding source.
Yeah. No, that's the other half that could tank the opioid program. And I want the state to take the other half of that. That's what I committed asking them for about a month ago. That jail treatment grant within compensation chair where we were going to ask, fund, use that money to help with dual diagnosis. Their class, run it, right, jail treatment. That money will go with this.
Mr. Mann again?
Yeah, Mr. President, I thank you for the opportunity to ask questions.
Well, this is kind of important, I believe. So this is one of the bigger things that's come along in the-
So page one, you're asking the annual budget committee to put in some work?
Yes, yes, counsel.
Okay. Because we, from what I've heard, there are a lot of ideas by members of this council where this money can come from. But I wanted to make sure that you were not requesting it out of county general. So thank you.
I'm just asking county to fund it some-
All right, question two.
There you go.
The second page is out of county general.
And that's the court's budget?
Yes, pretrial screeners that you're currently funding under the court's budget. We're asking for an additional-
An additional person.
Okay, plus the FICA, the PERF, and the INFR.
Right, yes.
Okay, so Cheryl, I know I'm ahead, so I apologize ahead of time. Is it your understanding then that the county's 4B would include page two? Or is this going to have to be added to the county's general 4B?
I don't think it's in there. I think I'll have to get it. Oh, it's not on the court's page. How about that? But one other thing I want to check on. You, in your request, Judge?
Yes.
You had added a social worker slash therapist at a base salary of $60,000, and that's to be added to the court's budget as well?
And then the nurse practitioner was a contract employee.
Right, the nurse practitioner, and then you also had a contract for health assuming check temperatures and when they're coming in for reports or something.
Yeah, we talked about that last time. I think that Jim told us how to ask for reimbursement-
Yeah, for through the CARES?
Through the CARES Act. I think that's what we discussed. And you gave specific instructions to Jim on how to do that.
Yeah, but that's what that's for.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Mann, we've got two things. One, that auditor's been working diligently to try to get the budget into the gateway. And the state, what, about every time they're ready to do it, that it doesn't work again. And so therefore, there are delays in those things through no fault of any of the people in this room. And this program-
It's not the same one.
Has been, is what I would call new proposal. And it's timed to be addressed to all of us. So where the funding come from, I mean, the project is what the project is. And then that's our job to figure out where we would fund it from. I don't think that they have really gotten into that except for the state money. Isn't that right, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So then we, so we, if it's of interest to the council, we've got some work to do, it sounds like.
I would say, and I will end with this because I, once again, I appreciate the opportunity to ask. In some of our other experiences that we've had when we tried to use funds that weren't from county general, one of the questions that has to be asked is, is this fund going to be able to sustain the request?
Right.
If not, then you're going to have to have a request made from another fund in order to do this. So I would just recommend that whatever is chosen is chosen as a way that you know this, because I think it is, and in light, it's, we're moving. And I don't want it to be subject to something where there could be any hiccup, where there could be a reduction because of whatever, lack of funding. So I appreciate it, Cheryl. Thank you, Kalissa. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm finished. Thank you.
Need your help, Mr. Mann.
I enjoy this. This is, this is good stuff.
I wanted to bring this to light because I know Bill and I have had discussions about this. It's about the additional $75,000 to supplement work release indigent program that you're asking for in 2021. But I thought you might want to expand on that. And then possibility of having to get additional funding for 2020 as well.
I don't know where we are, but we were pretty low.
I know you-
And we moved a lot of people from work release to home detention during COVID.
If we had not had what the council did a few years ago, established the indigent funds, you put 150,000 in there and then you took and said, here's 75,000 now, and if you need more, come back. With, when COVID hit, if you had not done that, we would have been so far up the proverbial creek. No one would have believed it. A lot of those people would have hadn't gone back into jail. We had, in two days, we had 65 people lose their jobs because of COVID. They had no way of paying. They had to go out to home detention because state and the health department, the Department of Defense, we get everyone out of work in the center because they thought those were the areas that could be a pandemic concern. They went out to home detention, had no way to pay for fees, community correction, no way had a budget for that type of cost. The indigent fund money was used to cover those people. Some of them have now gone back to work and found other jobs. It was that carryover to keep them in community correction flow during that time. We've used up most of that money and we've asked-
For this year.
Yes. So that's in the court's budget for next year, asking for those dollars again because hopefully we don't need them again. But I can tell you that I've talked about what this council did with other agencies around the state who are struggling severely and put many people in jail and had all kinds of financial issues. They, they're amazed that the council did, well, you know, they had foresight when they were looking for ways to deal with jail population. I said, thankfully, we had it there. So in some ways, you've been the envy of other communities. I know that because I've even had councilmen ask, call me and say, now your county just put aside money for indigent people for no other reason than indigent. Now, you sure you're right? I said, yeah, I know I'm right. I said, we had the presentation. I said, yeah, they took it upon themselves, say, they wanted people out of jail. They were in jail only because they didn't have money to put in for the program. I said, yes, they set aside money for that.
Do we need to-
They were amazed by that.
Ask for, do I have to do it in a separate-
You'll need to submit a request, request additional appropriations.
For the rest of the year?
But it has saved us and the offenders hearing this.
You want to have-
Jail couldn't pay them all. No, at one time, hearing this, we had almost 240, 50 people out there on home detention. Probably close to 80 of those, 70 had to come out and work. Get them out of there, they had nowhere else to go. They had to put them out. And I can go to the chair and talk about it. He definitely wasn't holding his head in her body.
So Judge, what I'm hearing is, one, the pretrial screeners have been helping the judges make better decisions, or at least more quickly.
Yes, very quickly.
So we could count that as a success.
I think so.
Now, what we're talking about is possibility of, of people, and I've just dabbled in it just a tiny bit, but with the law enforcement people. But you're talking about people that, like you say, have repetitive offenses.
Dual diagnosis.
And so, and so I said something to Bill, and I said, well, so we're going to babysit these people. And he said, well, sort of. But in other man, we are handling it in another manner, and we are babysitting those, and we're putting them in a storage facility right now to keep them safe and keep our other people safe. And we're looking at trying something different to manage that. And perhaps at least one thing, because of budgetary concerns, reducing the workload on our prosecutors, public defenders, and law enforcement, maybe.
Yes.
And we can really do share load.
Yes, maybe.
And a big portion of this population ends up, and it's sad, again, they end up, they've become a part of the home community because they have no one who wants to take them in advantage. They don't turn, they just keep getting arrested because they have nowhere to go. So this program stabilized them, have the social workers begin to work with them on getting them hooked up to community options or assets that are available. Once they're stabilized, they can take, start making progress. Then hopefully it impacts that group as well because some of the people are home. They're arrested, yeah. Again, another avenue of unity is help.
Well, and being progressive in terms of treating people in the jail may stop people from being committed to those forensic beds in the state hospitals in the long run. Because the way, once someone's committed after being found incompetent, they're committed to the state mental hospital, they may sit in the jail for three to four months before they're actually transferred to the state hospital. And it's not exactly a therapeutic environment, so.
And unfortunately, our jails have become-
Our psychiatric facilities.
Our mental health hospital. County jails, our mental health hospital.
Say that again.
County jails have become mental health hospital and probably can't find a chair in the state.
Okay. So this is our problem.
Yes, it is.
Other questions?
We appreciate your time tonight. I know it's a late night, and I know you've got a lot to do.
Well, I appreciate all your efforts on these things.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get you guys with one more? No, I'm, we're all right. We're all right.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other questions? As a council, you have had these 10 threats to local government revenues from COVRA or corona recession, as what Larry DeBoer from Department Agriculture Economics at Purdue University has put out. He has done this for several years, different things. They have 10 targeted items. He has some determinations. This is a, thanks, guys. This is a very generalization as we have 92 counties. So again, we do not have a picture of how this affects our county specifically. Mr. Bramble, you had an opinion on our revenue stream. If you might want to state that at this time.
Well, number four, I think they've, has been solved, I guess, or changed between the date of this, April of this year and the present time. The governor by executive order extended the June 30th deadline of counting income tax collections towards next year's distributions. They extended those through to September. So the July 15th tax filing deadline won't affect next year. So you're, I don't look for significant decline in income tax revenue next year. Maybe the year after. But it shouldn't be too bad next year because it's based on 2009, 19.
So any questions on references or ideas from any council members? Are you seeing things or you've heard something or anything like that? I think that our budgeting, our, obviously, no one planned for these kinds of problems, I guess we'll put it that way. Vigo County financially remains sound. And we're not, we're not scrambling to make up shortfalls in some of these items at this time. We had Mr. Patterson in to the annual budget committee. And he, he seems to be probably the hardest hit of any of the revenue streams. The, did you say the riverboat gaming that the state said they were going to try to retain that at about the same level, even though the? Okay, so that's one revenue stream. Like I say, at some point, you heard from local road street highway department, they're working through- working through theirs pretty quickly and managing it, so, like I say, I, at some point, we're going to have to put our finger down and say, this is what we plan on budgeting. And, you know, it's August, sometimes we're ahead of this a little bit, but that's, we'll get work through it and make. So at that point, if I don't have any other comment from anybody, welcome your input. I think Vicki and Chris and I would need every bit of you guys' effort to, to, I don't, again, I don't, where you want to, where you want to go in the next year. And the previous presentation and here from the courts is, you know, probably a lot of you weren't aware of, but it was, I just thought they could come in and explain it as well as, there's no point me trying to explain that, obviously. So take that into consideration, too. So that's, that's a, that's a new one, I think. So anything else from any additional, or any observations on any of these items, revenue? You guys want to digest what the court's put forward a little bit before I take a poll? Seem to be have pretty much, pretty, some optimism towards that.
I would say it, you know, it's very reasonable. It's very reasonable.
Okay. All right, well, if there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion.
Wait, you need to sign.
Got to have signed, oh, sorry, thank you. Thank you. All right, four, budget adjustment, we have some things. There's the contractual fund, that would be 20-025, additional appropriation, 43-301-32. Juvenile justice, request for additional appropriation, 2026, $10,000. All right, health department is a grant that's already gone through, we do not, I was advised we do not have to act on that.
That's withdrawn.
Yeah. So we have 20-28, or 028, E91, new equipment, additional appropriation, $91,591, 66 to budget adjustment, and maybe that's for some new office equipment here. They put that in their annual budget request, and I moved it to additional appropriation. You can, we can either handle it or not. Yes. Building maintenance is 20-029, additional appropriation, $210,000 for budget adjustment. I believe this has to do with the malware reimbursement on the, when the computers got targeted. So budget judge, budget adjustment, I don't think you have too, anything too strenuous here, but you've got quite a bit to act on. What else do I have? Is that it? No appointments? Is that it? Okay. So at this time, I would entertain that in a motion.
So moved.
Second. Second. All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passed by Semino. Chris.
Quite a lot, guys.
Thank you.